Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by your local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Harvey L. Hall.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's my pleasure to call to order the City Council Meeting of November the 2nd, 2016, and ask the City Clerk to please call the roll. As each council member answers the roll call, please take a moment to introduce your student. The student may then share their biography with the City Council and the audience. It's my honor and pleasure to recognize Victoria Von Flew, who is my mayor for the evening, and she'll tell you a little bit about herself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Von Flew, and I am a senior at Bakersfield High School. Next year, I will be attending Mercy College in Dobbs Ferry, New York, and I will be studying business finance. At school, I have a 4.43 GPA, and I am a member of the National Honor Society and the California Scholarship Federation. I enjoy playing tennis on our varsity tennis team and swimming for the team as well. I am the ASB president, and I am the CEO of our virtual business class. Another thing I enjoy doing for the community is working on the Relay for Life Board as the youth board member, so, thank you.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you. Thank you, Roberta. The student that was joining me tonight is Caleb Melson. He's unable to attend, but he's a student at North High School, and he will graduate with a bachelor's degree, and he would like to work in physical therapy. Caleb is a football player. He's in track and several other activities at the school, and he has a unique hobby. He likes to work on his Jeep, so he's handy in that. So Caleb, wherever you are, good luck in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
He's not here tonight, so I don't look like him, but I do get the opportunity to introduce the stand-in for Mr. Rivera tonight, and that is Karen Guzzada. She is from an East High student right now. Her plans are to study for family and divorce law, and she is going to major in political science at UC San Diego. So would you like to tell us more about yourself?
Good evening. I'm Karen, and I do attend East Bakersfield High School. I have a cumulative GPA of 4.39, and I've been on honor roll since my freshman year. I am a part of the California Scholarship Federation since my sophomore year. I've been in forensics since I've been in high school, and I'm currently the team captain. I've been in mock trial for two years, and I am the mock trial president. And I'm also currently the ASB president, and I've been involved in class council since my freshman year, and I'm the CSF vice president. My hobbies and interests are reading and examining Mexican literature. I really enjoy taking in the culture that I come in from and just having an understanding and admiring where I come from. For community service, during the summer, I interned at the Children First Campaign, and I kept 40 elementary students busy during the summer. I am also part of the Four Dimension and Dream Builders Program, and we're currently working on our project.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Terry Maxwell, and I'd like to introduce my stand-in for tonight, Martha Ilagway. She is a Foothill High student, and she has some wonderful plans for the future. You want to just go ahead and stay here for the rest of the night? I need to go home, so. Anyway, I would like to let her go ahead and tell you about herself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Martha Ilagway, and I attend Foothill High School. I am a senior. My overall GPA is a 3.6. I've been in honors since freshman year, and this year and last year, I'm an IB. I'm not sure what school I want to attend to yet, so I'm applying to Irvine, Santa Barbara, Santa Cruz, and Berkeley, and I want to study marine biology or criminal justice. The activities I'm involved in is ASB. I've been in ASB for four years, and I am currently the ASB president. And also, I've been in cheer for four years, and I'm in varsity. My hobbies, I love to read, and I like to go thrift shopping all the time. It's so fun. And community service, I volunteer at the Boys and Girls Club over the summer, and I performed with the cheerleaders. And during school, we have like the spirit of season, and so last year, we made blankets for the children at the hospital, so yeah.
Councilmember Weir.
Here, and this is Kira Salas, and it's Kira.
Yes.
Okay. It's Kira Salas, and she's going to tell you about the remarkable things that she's done in high school.
Good evening. My name's Kira Salas, and I go to Garsus Memorial High School. I hope to attend USC, majoring in human biology, and then eventually become a sports physical therapist. Currently, my GPA is a 4.81. I'm in National Honor Society, the CSF vice president, Link Crew vice president, and the yearbook editor. I also am a varsity cheerleader and a pole vaulter. Some community service things I do is assisting the League of Bakersfield, Four Dimensions, and Interact. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here, and my student is Artemis Manser from Liberty High School.
Hi, my name is Artemis Manser, and I go to Liberty. My name's Artemis, and I go to Liberty. Next year, I hope to attend UCLA or Berkeley, majoring in business, especially in marketing. My GPA is a 4.5. Some activities I'm involved in is ASB. I'm currently ASB secretary, mock trial, Spanish Honor Society, and I'm the CEO of my Future Business Leaders of Liberty class. And some of my hobbies include art. I'm really into oil painting. Some of my community service projects are, last year, my school partnered with the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and we granted a four-year-old girl's wish to go to Disneyland, so I was really involved in that. This year, we're partnering with Mayor. It's a program that works with special needs kids through horseback riding, and I'm also part of the Four Dimension team. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes, thank you. I'm Jackie Sullivan, and my representative tonight is Crystal Rains. I'm going to let her tell about herself and her future plans. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Crystal May Rains. I go to Independence, and I really hope to go to Stanford and major in computer science. My career goal is to be a business executive. My GPA is 4.277. I'm a part of the California Scholarship Federation, member of the National Forensics League, member of the International Thespian Society, and I also won the Congressional App Challenge 2015. I'm the president of our school's Legal Legends Club for three years. I am ASB vice president. I am currently speech captain of our forensics team, and I'm in theater. My interests are video games. My community service, I am a part of a group called the Four Dimension/ Dream Builders, and we are doing a project to help serve our community's veterans. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier.
Hi, I'm here, and it's my pleasure to introduce Josh Alva from West High.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Alva. I'm a senior at West High School. I intend to go to UC Irvine. I plan to go into the medical field and become a pediatrician. I'm in National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, CSF. I am a senior, you need to know, at West High. I'm a member of Leaders in Life, and I have a 3.9 GPA. I've been in ASB for four years. I'm currently the ASB president. I've been in band for four years. I've been in Link Crew for three years, and I'm part of the AP Club. I love spending time with my family, and I love watching movies during the holiday season. I am a proud member of the Relay for Life West High team, and I am an ambassador for the Blood Bank Committee at our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I am pleased to introduce to you tonight my student from Miramonte, Jaclyn Leon.
My name is Jaclyn Leon, and I am from Miramonte High School. The college I am planning to attend is CSUB. My career goal is to be an elementary school teacher. My current GPA is a 3.7, and school activities are student leadership. I've been in leadership since my freshman year, and I am currently ASB president at Miramonte High. My hobbies are spending time with my family and helping others out. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hall, members of the council. My privilege tonight to introduce to you Elizabeth Reyes with Ridgeview High School.
My name's Elizabeth Reyes. I come from Ridgeview High School. I'm currently ASB president and have served on the ASB for four years. I maintain a 4.3 GPA and also am part of the PAC Committee, which is focusing on enhancing the culture of our school at Ridgeview High School. I'm also involved in drama and forensics and currently serve as our debate captain. I'm also a Girl State alum and a Hobie alum, and hope to continue to play varsity soccer for another year. Outside of school, I was recently appointed as youth commissioner for Ward 7 for Mr. Parlier, and I'm also participating in a learning center specifically for kids in need and focus on tutoring them on Mondays and Wednesdays. For my future plans, I aspire to attend UC Berkeley, hopefully Davis as well. Applications are due in a month or so, so my career goal is to go into business and marketing, hopefully minor in agriculture or political science. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's my pleasure to introduce Kerwin Adjun from South High School.
Good evening. So yeah, my name is Kerwin, and I go to South High School. My career goal is to become a pediatrician, and I want to go into UC colleges, preferably UCLA. I've been in honor roll since my freshman year, and I'm also in NHS and CSF. I am my school's ASB president. I've been in band for four years. I'm also in my school's Mathematical Science and Engineering Academy. I'm on my school's cross-country team and varsity swim team. I'm a blood drive ambassador, and I'm also in Link Crew. I enjoy designing and planning a lot, and I also like riding, too. And for community service, I tutor freshmen during Saturday school, and I help out with my blood drives, and I help chaperone at middle schools when they ask, when they need help.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing Sean Nguyen from Frontier High School.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Sean Nguyen from Frontier High School. I plan on attending a four-year university and postgraduate school, going into the medical field to become a pediatrician, hopefully at UC Berkeley or USC. I hold a 4.5 GPA. I'm part of the California Scholarship Federation and National Honor Society. I'm my school's current ASB president, as well as having been the class president for the past three years. I'm a three-year member of the school site council, a member of the current high school district student advisory council, part of Link Crew, and I play basketball on campus. My community service, I'm a blood drive ambassador for my school, part of the Boy Scouts of America, and I also participate in the Four Dimension and Dream Builders student leadership. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor Hall, council members, it is my honor and pleasure to introduce to you Lindsay Brackett from Centennial High School.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Brackett. I attend Centennial High School as a senior and also as my school's ASB president. On campus, I'm also involved in softball, our Random Acts of Kindness Club, Link Crew, and Kern County Student Leadership. After I graduate, I plan to go to Cal State Northridge to study business and marketing and hopefully minor in journalism. My hobbies are mainly devoted to ASB activities, as I'm always busy, and I annually volunteer for the Discovery Elementary Track Meet, and thank you.
Councilmember Rivera, would you like to make a comment in regards to our students tonight?
Well, I only left for like 20 minutes, and you guys replaced me with someone younger and smarter than I was. You know, I think this is awesome and obviously I think great for our community, so welcome to my student. She is actually welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, and I'll go ahead and leave, and she'll take care of business for Ward 1. Thank you.
At this time, I would like us all to stand for the invocation by Pastor Joe Jordan, Christ First Ministries, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Dulissa Mendoza, fourth grade student at Colonel Nichols Elementary School.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, I want to thank you for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Thank you for the rising of the sun and the giving of the same. Father God, we ask that you will look on this meeting, look on this congregation, look on your people. We pray prayers and blessings over Bakersfield. We pray prayers and blessings over each and every home that's represented here, Father God. We ask that you endow our leaders with the power and the wisdom to lead and guide in your name, and we thank you for it in Christ's name. Thank God, and we all say amen. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before we proceed, I request that all cellular telephones and communication devices be silenced. Pursuant to City Council policy, council members are prohibited from sending or receiving electronic communications during the meeting, and we request the same from our audience. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Also, please be courteous in the use of any still cameras and video equipment. Audience applause is allowed during the presentation portion of the meeting, but is not permissible at any other time during the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. I would like to recognize this evening from Bakersfield College at the political science class. Thank you, students, for being present this evening. We hope that your learning experience here at the City Council will be a favorable one, and certainly you're welcome to come back and attend a future City Council at your pleasure. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 4, Presentations. A presentation by Councilmember Weir to the Honorable Kim Mansu, Mayor of Buschan City, Republic of Korea, currently visiting Bakersfield.
For those of you that don't know, my real-life, big-time job is, I'm an accountant. And first part of the year, first three and a half months, I'm a pretty busy guy. And towards the end of March, first part of April, I get an email. I'm busy doing taxes, and the email says, "You want to go to Korea?" And I thought, well, I hadn't really thought about that, so I'll have to check around. And I got another email. "Are you going to Korea?" I don't know yet. Another email. "Okay, are you ready to go to Korea?" Okay, okay, let me check with my family. So lo and behold, we went to Korea. And I would advise anybody here that has the opportunity to go to Korea on the Sister City tour, take advantage of it. You will enjoy it. The people are most hospitable people I've ever met, and it was the most tremendous experience that me and my family have ever had. So tonight, we have the Korean delegation coming. You know, I sent Mayor Kim an email and said, "Hey, you want to come to Bakersfield?" Yeah, no, that didn't really happen. So tonight, we have the Korean delegation in town, and I'm here to present a plaque to the Honorable Mayor Kim Mansu, Mayor of Buschan City, honoring the... Are you doing okay? Okay. I forgot we have an interpreter here, so I have to slow down. Honoring the 10th anniversary of the establishment of the relationship of sister cities between Bakersfield, California, and Buschan City, Republic of Korea. Congratulations on 10 years of friendship.
Thank you all. Today, we welcome the visitors from Buschan City to the city's administration. We appreciate you all. The distance between Bakersfield and Buschan City is a long way to go. We hope to see you again in the future. Thank you all. Yeah, I'd like to first express my deep appreciation to all of you, especially Mayor Harvey Hall and all other council members for welcoming us. And by taking this opportunity with our visit, I hope our friendship between the two cities could be further. The distance between the two cities is a long way to go. We hope to see you again in the future. Thank you all. Yeah, 10 years is quite a long period, which means that our friendship has entered into a quite civilized period, and I hope so this will be another turning point for further and more prosperous and fruitful relationship between the two cities. Thank you all for inviting us. Once again, thank you all for inviting us, and I'd like to the health and happiness and prosperous future of Bakerfield City and the citizens living here.
Item 5, Public Statements.
At this time, we will receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please provide it to the City Clerk, who will provide the necessary copies to the City Clerk. If you are here to speak on hearing items 10A and 10B, this is not the time for you to speak. Members of the audience are asked to avoid engaging in any behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. Please do not criticize or impugn the mayor, city council, or any member of the staff or audience. The City Council is very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the City Council cannot take action when an item is not on the agenda. The City Council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
Mayor, we have one speaker this evening. Roscoe Rolnick regarding misdemeanor citation.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
I am Roscoe Rolnick. I live in Westchester on Beach Street. I also have a home on Spruce Street, and I own Guarantee Shoe Center. Last year, I was issued a misdemeanor citation for a yard sale that I had been told by the bill... or rather, been told by code enforcement that I could have two yard sales a year for two days. I had had them. They had been out several times, and they informed me on three or four occasions that it was all right for me to have this yard sale or have a yard sale there as long as I obeyed the law. Anyway, code enforcement came out. I was issued a citation for... They couldn't come up with a reason, so they finally said, "Well, you don't physically live there." I own the house. I'm remodeling it and plan on making that my permanent home because in the downtown area. So anyway, went to court on Christmas Eve. I was issued the citation. I questioned what it was for, the exact thing. Finally got to the base of it, that they said, "You're not the occupant. Occupancy means you're physically living there." I said, "Okay, then we won't have a yard sale." We were setting up for Thursday. I said, "I won't have a yard sale." I was written the citation. He said, "The intent was there, where I had had yard sales in the past." Then I went to court on Christmas Eve, as the citation said, and was told by the district attorney that I had too many yard sales. So it was, there was a conflict there. Anyway, long story short, I'm on probation for a year. I've had to stop. Everything I'm doing on my house on Spruce Street is sitting there, deteriorating till I'm out of probation, and I'm just wondering why I was being singled out and prosecuted for this. I'm a member of the community. My family's been in business here for 63 years. We've had six businesses in the downtown area. I've had one of the first murals that went up. I'm a scoutmaster. I was on the Arts Council, was a member of the Executive Board of the DBA, and I do a shoe drive for the homeless center that's given them over 70,000 pairs of shoes over the last 24 years. As a member of the community, I'm just thinking that I was singled out and was wondering why I was given a citation that nobody really knew what it was for. Anyway, it looks like my three minutes are up. I'll keep it to that so I don't have to... Mayor Hall won't have to cut me off. Thank you very much for listening to me. That's it.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Mr. Rolnick, I am well aware of the phenomenal things that you've done for our community, and it discourages me that a man of your stature was not treated better than that. I would like the staff to put together a report for me. I want to know how this whole thing rolled into a prosecution from the DA's office. You know, in the last four years, I'd like to know how often we have actually taken someone to court over having too many yard sales or not living in the house where the yard sale was at, even though they owned it. I think there's a better use of our code enforcement officers because this had to have been over the weekend. I think they've got better things to do, more enforcement that they could be doing for us, rather than victimizing Mr. Rolnick. I also would like, in that report, to know how at this point can we drop those charges and make it so that Mr. Rolnick is no longer on probation? I think that's a miscarriage of justice, and it should be jumped on as soon as possible. So I'm not going to start pointing any fingers as to how this happened, but I will want them to start from square one and let me know exactly how this whole thing developed out. Mr. Rolnick, did you want to say anything?
One other thing. A friend of ours who was at the property at the time, Wanda Johnson, was given a citation and appeared at the court at the same time. She is also on probation till New Year's Eve when we go back to court. If you could...
If we could include that into the report.
Yes, please.
I would very much appreciate it, and maybe the city attorney and I could talk about this matter a little bit later. Thank you very much for coming in and informing us of what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under consent calendar, items 8A through 8AH for approval. A staff memorandum has been received transmitting a revised exhibit for item 8F.
Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Does any council member wish to remove some, an item due to a conflict? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I, Bob Smith, would like to, I will abstain from voting on item 8E as I have a financial business entity that is associated with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve consent calendar items 8A through 8AH with Roberta. reverted. Did you have something? Okay, that was it? Okay, that was my motion.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Okay, we'll now take a short recess to allow the students to return to their homework and their preparation for tomorrow's school's activities. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 10, hearings.
Before I open the public hearing, I wish to state the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It is 15 minutes for all speakers. Therefore, it is important that you identify yourself and make your statement quickly so that others may speak. We will hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation first. Then we will hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there is testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal period. You will notice a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. And at the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating that your time is up and to quickly end your statement. You may pose questions during your statement, but they will not be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, provide it to the city clerk, who will then provide the necessary copies to the city council. Again, please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there is an approval by the majority of the city council, there is a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to the staff's recommendation. So please be precise and do not repeat the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
Item eight, public hearing to consider resolution adopting fees pursuant to the cost recovery system.
Mr. Smith, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Member of City Council Nelson Smith, Finance Director. The master fee schedule went through a full review process and was approved by the council March 30th of 2016. Since that time, a couple of items have come to our attention that need to be added to the fee schedule. The first is the wireless facilities right-of-way permit, where wireless companies want to attach their hardware to our-- within our public right-of-way. The second set of fees is related to food vending vehicles, and the council action took place recently on that as well. And the third item is a cleanup where there's a tire fee listed under the fire department's COUPA program, which is no longer applicable to that program.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will now ask if there are persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and return to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Excuse me, but I'm going to have to excuse myself from the second item, the food vending vehicle permit fee, as a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest. Could we separate these two items out, by any chance?
Madam Attorney, how do you want me to do this?
Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, it's one-- it's one resolution, so we're unable to separate it out. I think it would be best for you to simply recuse yourself from the entirety of the matter.
I agree, and that sounds fine with me.
Vice Mayor Hanson, did you make a motion on this item?
Yes, I did.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Maxwell abstaining.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public hearing to consider resolution certifying the 2016 Final Environmental Impact Report for the Kern River Flow and Municipal Water Program. A staff memorandum has been received, transmitting a comment-- a letter of comment from North Kern Water Storage District, and staff's response is also attached. In addition, a staff memorandum has been received, transmitting comments from Kern Water Bank Authority.
Ms. Gennaro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, tonight is the public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution certifying the 2016 Final EIR for the Kern River Flow and Municipal Water Program. As you know, your administrative report goes into great detail explaining the history surrounding this EIR. In summary, you may recall that in September 2012, over four years ago, you certified the 2012 Final EIR for this program. That document was challenged in court, and the city was required to decertify the 2012 EIR, which you did in 2015. In response to the court judgment, staff revised and recirculated the project description within that EIR to clarify that the programmatic EIR is a policy to pursue acquisition of additional water supplies, to also clarify that the proposed programmatic EIR did not involve any new actions related to uses of Kern River water, and to state that future project actions will be further reviewed environmentally before being approved. Otherwise, staff did not revise any other portion of the 2012 programmatic EIR as the court rejected all other challenges to that EIR, and it only directed the city to revise the project description. On September 14 of 2016, your Water Board conducted a public hearing on the recirculated draft EIR, and it unanimously recommended that the staff prepare responses to the comments received and that it bring the new final EIR to you here tonight for your consideration. Each of you received two binders for the hearing tonight. The first binder is the 2012 EIR, which although decertified, is before you tonight for recertification, and a second binder, which contains the recirculated project description and comments to the responses received on the recirculated sections. Together, both of those binders comprise the new 2016 Final EIR for the Kern River Municipal Flow Program. Here tonight, in the front row, is Mr. Ken Schwartz from Horizon Water and Environment. Mr. Schwartz has been the lead consultant on this matter, and he will present a brief PowerPoint of the topic before the mayor opens the public hearing. I should note that there is a court reporter here tonight, to your left, taking down everything that we say on this particular item, again, so that we can have a record in case this matter returns to court. After receiving comments, staff is available to answer any questions from the council. And barring any new comments, we are recommending that council adopt a motion certifying the 2016 Final EIR for the Kern River Flow and Municipal Water Program. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Ms. Gennaro, for the introduction and the summary of the process related to this Final Environmental Impact Report. And I'll present a brief overview, and then we'll take public comments.
Excuse me, before you proceed, will you identify yourself?
Oh, certainly. My name is Ken Schwartz. I'm a principal at Horizon Water and Environment. So we'll briefly describe the purpose of this program, its objectives and overview, a few words on the CEQA California Environmental Quality Act and the process itself and what's occurred over the last four years. Ms. Gennaro nicely summarized it all there for us. And then we'll talk about next steps. And finally, most importantly, I have an opportunity for the community to provide public comments.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry, Mr. Schwartz.
Oh, sure.
But I'll need you to go to the podium because we're not able to pick up the audio on that microphone.
Okay. Oh, okay. Very good, thank you. Thank you. Oops, got the mouse here. There we are. So this program is multi-objective. It's shown in this slide. Several bullets describe the objectives and the benefits of the program. Most notably, it's a program envisioned to provide more water in the Kern River. And by doing so, enhancing the Kern River, its natural resources, also its groundwater resources below the Kern River, and thereby providing water for the city to use in its water resources. Location, the program is focused along the corridor of the Kern River through the city of Bakersfield. Some key elements of the program. The program would not require any new infrastructure. Would use existing infrastructure to manage flows on the Kern River. There'd be no unsafe, sudden, or unforeseen quick changes in flows. This would be managed as a gradual flow program. And groundwater recharge would occur over time. The timing horizon for this program is a long-term program where these improvements of increased flows will start benefiting the city over the coming years. The final bullet there is something relatively new related to Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. This is relatively new law in 2015. It wasn't part of the original EIR in 2012, but we did have to review it for this final EIR in 2016. And this program is very supportive and consistent with all the requirements of that law. So it's not very complicated how this program will work. The increased quantities of water that the city will obtain will be allowed to flow down the river and therefore increase stream flows, increase percolation, subsurface storage, enabling the aquifer to recharge, thereby enriching the city's water resources and availability of water to use for municipal uses. Just a few words on the CEQA process itself. Ms. Gennaro nicely summarized this, and you can see this program has quite a long history, going back to the initial notice of preparation in 2011. 2012, we had the issuance of the original draft EIR and the final EIR, which was certified in September 2012. Legal challenge after that. Decertified in September 2015. And then, following the judgment, a recirculated draft EIR was developed, following the judge's ruling, as Ms. Gennaro summarized, focusing on clarifications in the program description. This is the recirculated draft EIR document that you have seen, that was issued in August. We had the public hearing here in September, and that started a 45-day review period in which we received numerous comments on the document. And we now developed a final EIR document. That's what Ms. Gennaro described to you in the two volumes. This is volume one, the original final document from 2012. Why that's important is it includes the response to comments from the 2012 process that are not being addressed currently in 2016, but those need to be included for the record as well. And, volume two, the recirculated draft EIR, comments on that draft, and response to comments. So together, this is the final EIR. These package, this package of the two binders together. We're now here at November 2nd for the hearing on this EIR. In terms of potential environmental impacts, these were evaluated at the program, programmatic level. And there is the potential to induce population growth here by providing additional water resources to the city. This was evaluated to be entirely consistent with the city's general plan. And although potentially significant and unavoidable, it's consistent with the city's general plan. Additionally, beyond this, there were several benefits related to the program, including all the benefits that would come with providing water in the Kern River in terms of biological resources, ecology, providing water supply, groundwater recharge, public services, recreation, and aesthetics. Cumulative impacts on air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, groundwater recharge were evaluated at the program level and considered to be less than significant. Terms of next steps, this is a phased process. This is a program EIR. The city is going to be moving forward, coordinating with the State Water Resources Control Board to determine the quantity of unappropriated water that will be available to support this program. And at which time that the city understands how much water will be available to support this program, the city will then consider subsequent, subsequent analysis as necessary to evaluate potential impacts at a project scale when the specific amount of water is known. At that later time, the city would then potentially consider approval of the program when those details are known. With that, I'd like to end my brief presentation and open discussion here for public comments. And those comments would be following all the guidance that you provided and how people should make comments. Unless there are any questions for me.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will now ask if there are persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Rich O'Neill, and I speak on behalf of the Kern River Parkway Foundation. Our foundation is supportive of the final EIR, and we ask the council to approve it this evening. The EIR, we feel, does an adequate job of defining and describing the project. And everything that I can see in there supports the city of Bakersfield's general plan. And a little bit of common sense is supported by this EIR. And the EIR also supports the Kern River Plan, which is a vital element of both the city and the county's general plans. Allowing some water flowing down the river will certainly improve the community's mood. It is our quality of life. It will also, as mentioned before, it'll improve business. It'll bring jobs to the city. Just last week, we had an article in the news. We want to ask people in the community to come up with ideas to improve tourism in the county and the city of Bakersfield. What better idea than to have a minimum flow of water down that river? When we have it, of course, the drought's not going to last forever. And putting some water down that river will enhance our environment, our water quality, recreation. It only makes sense to do that. And we ask for your support of the EIR this evening. Thank you very much.
Are there additional persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation? Persons wishing to speak in favor of the staff recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this item and return to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Motion to adopt a resolution certifying the 2016 Final Environmental Impact Report for the Kern River Flow and Municipal Water Program. That's my motion.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under new business, resolution setting the dates of regular city council meetings, budget hearings, and department budget presentations for January through December 2017.
Mr. Telia, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. We've come to that time of the year where we start to plan for the next year. And part of that is setting this calendar for our regular council meetings and our budget workshops for 2017. The clerk's office has done a good job of sort of mirroring the calendar that we've used this year. We've taken into consideration holidays, other boards, and commission meetings, League of California Cities Conference, and other potential conflicts. So with that, we present the calendar that was included in your packet for your consideration.
Vice Mayor Hanson, do you have a comment? Vice Mayor Hanson, do you have a comment?
Only that I hope to participate next year. I'll make a motion to approve the calendar for the regular city council meetings, budget hearings, and department budget presentations for 2017.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight and thank a few folks in particular in helping put on the Sixth Annual Trunk or Treat Event we had last week at Plans Park. Councilmember Parley and I, along with Bakersfield Professional Firefighters and the Kiwanis Club, and several others, including our families, and several hundred kids from around the community got to take part in a fun little event over there, where folks were dressed up, and we passed out candy, and firefighters barbecued hot dogs, and provided dinner for everyone. And so I just wanted to thank you folks for being out there. Appreciate that very much. Thank you, Councilmember Parley, for that partnership. And I -- oh, I'd be remiss if I forgot to mention Assemblymember Rudy Salas, who was also there and had staff there as well. That's a really fun event. I enjoy, I get to dress up and pretend to be someone else, which is always a lot of fun, and I look forward to next year.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I just had one referral tonight. I presently have a referral to the Legend Lit Committee regarding how and why grants are awarded. I would like to add to that, a referral on the recent grant awards from Kern Cog regarding the bicycle education and the other subjects that were on that number that we recently got. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention what a pleasure it was to have the student body representatives for, let's see, the 62nd consecutive Team Government Day. It's just, I know they enjoy it, we enjoy it. It's very encouraging to just see the outstanding young people that we have every year, and it gives them a taste of city government, and it's truly a pleasure to have them introduce themselves and then give us an idea about their future plans. So congratulations and well wishes to each one of the students that were here tonight. Thank you. And also, the water plan is just going to -- I know a lot of work was done on that, a good presentation from the fellow, and anyway, it's something good to look forward to. Thank you.
You know, I think it's exciting, and it's really too bad that I'm not going to be here as mayor when we start running river water down in Bakersfield again, because that always has been such a positive enhancement for our community, and I wish the council well on this item as we pursue running beautiful water into our Kern River through Bakersfield. The employees incentive team has started a food drive. It started on the 1st of November among all of the city departments, and I encourage everyone to participate in that and to bring food to the individual containers at the departments. And then, when the contest is all over in November, then, near the first council meeting in December, then I will bring a recognition to the winning department. So I hope that all of the employees will come forward and do a marvelous job and help community action partnership, feed the less fortunate in our community, especially at Thanksgiving time. I've always been very supportive of the work that has been done by so many individuals and organizations that adopt streets in our community for regular cleanups. In this past week, I had the opportunity to recognize three new contracts for Yolanda Whitely, Gurinder Singh, and Dr. Michael Thurman. And I want to encourage everyone to continue to find a street in their neighborhoods and in our community that they can adopt, and you do that process through Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee. And I just think it's terrific that we still have outstanding people that are willing to help and beautify Bakersfield. I was very happy to allow Councilmember Weir the opportunity to recognize his new friends from Buschan, South Korea, and, you know, the Buschan community has visited Bakersfield seven times since we initiated this relationship 10 years ago. They are very exceptional when it comes to recognizing the value of the sister-city relationship with Bakersfield. You know, each time, we have these comments that talk about the calendar for next year and who may or may not be here next year. You know, I'm down to two meetings, and so I hope that as we proceed for these last two meetings, that we will continue to enjoy each other's work and respect one another and bring nothing but the best for the future of the city of Bakersfield. There's no further comments. We stand adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor Hall.